Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 15th, 2014. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we enter the blessed holiday season, we are ever thankful for the many gifts and opportunities and expressions of goodwill that our community continues to show. Yesterday's toy support drive by Access, sponsored by the city, was an overwhelming success, and we've made Christmas possible for a large number of families in this community who otherwise would have not had as good a time as I assure them they're going to have, given what they were able to pick up from yesterday's program. So we're thankful for just the great outpouring of support that appeared in Batavia in the last two weeks. The last week was just a real blessing to observe and watch as we saw this community rise to a new plateau of commitment and support for needy folks in our town, and we are just ever thankful for such a great spirit to exist in the community of Batavia, and we're very proud of that. Tonight, as always, we want to, in this season, send a special blessing to those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are serving on foreign soil in defense of our liberties, and we just ask that guidance and opportunities of safety be showered upon them as they go about their duties on our behalf. As always, we just ask for direction and vision as we enact and act on the various items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of us in our hearts and minds are here tonight to do what is in the very best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Stark, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call to roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Callahan is absent. Alderman Homan is absent. Sam.
Here.
Vasiliyan.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that 12 of the 14 elected Aldermen are present and accounted for this evening's meeting so we may have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Stark, do you have anything this evening?
No one has notified me of any changes.
I have a question on the agenda. I noticed on tomorrow night's agenda, item number 17 is on committee meeting tomorrow night, and it's also on tonight's meeting, so I don't know. Ordinance 1475 is on tomorrow night's meeting.
I think we're going to have a suggestion that you don't have a tomorrow night's meeting, but Mr. McGrath?
Well, that's your suggestion, but the, I wrote a memo that said that the pay-down call firefighters just on Friday had approached us, and instead of us negotiating with them as we usually do, or we talk with them, we don't negotiate, we're more than satisfied that the city was going to pass along the same wage increases, because we usually mirror what we do with the general wage and salaries, but because it came out on, I think, Thursday or Friday, I didn't want to be surprising anybody, so I put it on both agendas. If you felt comfortable with it tonight, fine. If you don't, I put it over until tomorrow night.
So we're keeping it on tonight's agenda, correct?
Unless somebody wants to pull it off.
We have no action then on items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Moving then to item number five, presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Stark?
The consent agenda reads as follows: We accept and place on file the November 2014 monthly building report. The committee have the whole minutes for November 13th, 2014. The following approval is December 5th, 2014, payroll in the amount of $793,034.94. The accounts payable register in the amount of $1,400,047.50. The city council minutes for November 17th, 2014. Resolution 14158, our accepting plan of dedication for 727 Cleveland Avenue. Resolution 14161, our Article 36 surplus vehicles. Resolution 14157, our website design and hosting service. Resolution 14160, our authorizing task order number three with Avant Energy, Inc., for 2015, NERC compliance for an amount not to exceed $35,000. I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second. Alderman Stark, second, Alderman Vasiliyan, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call to roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, 0 no, 2 absent. Moving to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? Could you give us your name, please, for the clerk?
Sure. My name is Jeff Johns, and I live at 121 Pitts Lane. And I have a few questions. First off, at the last city council meeting, which was actually my first council meeting, I was rebuked when I asked a question during this session outside of what we're talking about right now. So my question is, what protocol do we follow?
Well, we follow a protocol that does not allow for free-for-all in the meeting where people from the audience can just enter in and start yelling or asking questions or involve themselves. So we ask that, under this particular item, if anybody in the audience has a particular question, this is their moment to come up and ask it, so we hopefully cover the ability of the public to speak to us, and then we then allow the city council then to discuss the rest of the items on their agenda as it is presented by the agenda.
Okay. Do we follow the Roberts Rule of Order, or is this just some protocol that the councils?
I think this is probably our idea for...
Because most of the other communities do follow the Roberts Rule of Order.
We do too, but I don't know if it's one that's particularly memorialized in Roberts Rule of Orders.
Not that I recall.
Nobody polices it or monitors it?
Well, we do have certain guidelines that we attempt to follow in terms of the, this part of the session meeting. Generally, the council meeting is governed by Roberts Rules of Orders, but there are some variants that are allowed for under the city code and all that.
So as a citizen, can I look somewhere and see what protocol is? Is that on the website anywhere, or?
Yeah, I believe the guidelines are on the website, and I think Mr. McGrath has verified that as well, so.
Because I guess I'm real concerned on a few items that are outside of this particular section, so how am I able to address those, namely items 13 and item 17?
Your Honor.
Oh, okay, because actually what it says is, for items not on the agenda.
Well, if you have some particular thing you'd like to offer relative to either of those items, this is your chance to do so.
Great, great. It's not that I have something to offer, I have some questions in regards to that. And I want to talk about item 13, which is wages and salary for non-collective represented employees for the years 2015, 16, and 17. So my question first off is, this is a multiple-year increase. Have we done that before in Batavia?
Many times.
When was the last time?
I couldn't tell you. Maybe it might have been 2008, that was the, until really till the economy turned down, it was the, by far, the norm.
Okay. So currently on this year, 2014, are they under a multiple-year increase?
No.
So my question also is, why put it in now?
Well, it does provide for stability, so that you don't have to go through this every year. There's relationships between the wages and salaries of this group of people and the wages and salaries of collectively bargained people, because internal parity is something that's really important to us. It certainly is valuable to us to not have to negotiate. We have six bargaining units. It's very valuable not to have to negotiate six of those contracts, year in, year out.
Those six bargaining, they're all non-union?
No. The six bargaining units are all unions.
Oh, okay, but what we're referring to here is non-union.
Right, but I'm, the value, there's an extreme value to try and keep some internal parity among all your employees, so, and in 2008 and '09, when the economy started going down, I think the city council felt it was going to be impossible to know what was going to lie ahead, and so all of the multi-year agreements, it just wasn't fair on either side to do that. So we started going into, you know, layoffs and all that, and then single-year agreements.
Where can I get information on the layoffs?
You can talk to me. I've been asked that by Alderman Vasiliyan just yesterday, and I'm having that all prepared.
That was through me.
Oh, okay. I'm preparing it right now.
Great. Well, I'm going to share with you, because I have a real concern, and you're all elected officials representing the citizens, and I encourage you to try to run this city as you run your own households, and if you're in the private sector, to look at the way the private sector does. You are correct, obviously, no in collective bargaining, and I was actually a union member for many years, and I agree, that's something that's right to do, multi-year agreement. But for a non-union group, learn from the private sector. Aren't increases based on merit outside of the unions?
It depends what your compensation system is. The compensation here isn't merit-based. We had a merit component for salaried employees. It was taken away several years ago and never restored, so actually they're operating on nothing but a, you might call it a COLA or value-of-money increase. I have written to the council, told them that I would be, that I've advised them, I think the new humans resources director who we're going to be hiring should look at a blend of a merit system and yet another system.
Wouldn't it be wise to maybe look at multiple years after the human resources director has a chance to do further analysis?
I, that's not my opinion, I don't think so. I think there's a real valuable, value to, and we talked with the council, they felt comfortable enough with the next couple of years that they thought they could, that this was okay to preserve some kind of stability.
Are we out of the recession here in Batavia with increases in our tax dollars coming from the business side? The way I see it is, we've lost a lot of retail revenue over the last several years that has not been recovered. So my feeling is, is we're still in some challenges here in terms of our revenue to support a three-year increase.
Absolutely, and most of our employees are earning just a little above what they were earning, I believe in 2009, maybe 2010, because they all took, you know, wage cuts and got those back, so, you know, you have to make a balance as to what you think is happening. We're not asking for any kind of increased tax levy or any fees or anything like that, and, you know.
Yet.
Pardon me?
Yet.
No, the budget that the city council passed does not have any, not contain any increases in the levy or fees or costs.
Okay. I guess, again, my concern is, we don't know what the economic situation's going to be for '15 in Batavia, or '16, or even '17 for that matter, so that would be a concern that I certainly have in terms of the economy. So, another question in regards to this, what percent is this group's wages, earnings, and benefits to the total budget?
Approximately 77% of the city budget is basically for services.
For this group?
Right.
Sorry?
I don't have an accurate percentage based on these numbers, but it's around 25%.
So again, do we know what the impact is, what it's going to actually cost, this three-year increase? Is it $100? Is it $100 million?
Certainly. We could calculate it for you, I can't tell you what is...
Oh, okay, so council's going to review it, but they don't know what it's going to cost?
They know that wages and salaries are going to cost them 2% more than it did last year, or 2 and 1/2%.
Okay. And again, as a citizen, I don't have the information that I'd like to have, and I guess as council members, you know, I encourage you guys to ask the questions as well, too. You know, are we all familiar with the budget? Do we agree with it? Certainly, we all vote on it. I see a lot of unanimous voting amongst the council, and that's not a jab at any one of you, but I think we need to ask more questions.
Sir, the budget, the budget was on the website and announced at these meetings for several weeks before the two public budget meetings. Citizens were told in public that they could write any question that they want, as did the Alderman. Any question that the Alderman asked at any time was responded to in writing and placed on the website. So, and I apologize if the question you had wasn't asked, but there were opportunities, and I, as I said, I will absolutely work on the questions that you've asked and get it to you and put it on the website and get it to the city council.
Great, thank you. No need to apologize, because I actually just started to have some interest in the city and the council, maybe within the last four weeks. And I really compliment my own Alderman, Marty Callahan, for communicating with me, and I think he's done a nice job representing both the citizens but also the community.
Mr. Board?
If I can add, you mentioned about the unanimous vote. One of the things that I've learned in my short time on the council that I wasn't aware of is that most of the work done in terms of questions and discussion are done at the committee level, that, you know, and the budget's a real good example. It, you know, it's been through the, through the committee level for a month or two, various aspects of it. Questions were asked, things were discussed, and, and any concerns that were had are answered by that time, so that when it gets to the actual council meeting, the questions have all been asked and answered. So, so it's not a rubber-snap process by any means, it's just the final step along the way.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for allowing me a few minutes here to ask my questions.
The other thing I'd like to ask, Mr. Your Honor, is, I'm a little confused about the, the matters from the public agenda, because I thought that the way we were doing this was that this item matters for the public for items not on the agenda was, was an opportunity for citizens to speak on issues that aren't on our agenda, but if it was on the agenda, they would be afforded an opportunity when we got to whatever that particular item was. And so, that's why, I was, I was also a little confused the last week when he asked to address the council when we were talking about the specific item and wasn't allowed to, so if you could just clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I mean, obviously, we developed this policy after we had a couple of, kind of, I would describe them as bad experiences, where the meeting became kind of a free-for-all because all of a sudden we had all kinds of people wanting to come in and have us start from ground one and, you know, tell me about how this whole program was developed, and who's in charge of it, et cetera, et cetera. And there was a lot of criticism that came from the members of the city council at the time, that we were getting, you know, we were involved in items on the agenda, and suddenly we had people wanting us to give them a history lesson on things that went on, you know, some of us pretty involved history, and a lot of it centered on probably subjects like a new subdivision that was coming in, and, you know, where was this land, and what was the last comprehensive plan, and who owns it, and who's buying it, and, you know, where does the drainage go, and, you know, where are my, where's the light, electricity going to come off of what pole, and, I mean, there was a lot of that, so that's why we kind of developed kind of a tighter control over the agenda, so that we didn't turn this thing into a, you know, when the rest of the council knew all the answers, and it was that we weren't going to turn every item on the agenda into an informational process, and you'd be here for hours and hours and hours, and that got, you know, the consternation of a lot of members of the city council. So, you know, we've been through this going back to prior to I was the mayor. I mean, this, this has been going on for a long time as to how people would come in, and, because sometimes people don't come in, and, you know, we just witnessed a citizen I thought had great demeanor and great to-the-point questions, and kind of understood what he wanted to ask and where he wanted to go, but, I mean, we've seen other examples where citizens get up here and say, "Well, gee, I don't know if I like this idea or not," you know, and, "So tell me more about it," and, you know, "Who's going to administer it?" And, you know, "How much is this going to cost?" And, you know, if they had come to the committee meeting, as you just fairly pointed out, they would have had all that question, so, you know, like any government, whether, whether you're in the General Assembly or the U.S. Congress or whatever, I mean, there has to be a moment when the government has to take actions on things, and you can't constantly be there and continuously answer questions and review when people who are asking them, if you allow them to ask, because they'll be here, you'll be here for a long time on certain issues. So that's kind of where it all defines, and I think we have to, whoever's sitting in the chair has to kind of run it with some open-mindedness that you are fair, and if there is some budding question, certainly, hopefully, that person in the audience, as I think Alderman Callahan reached out to this gentleman, that, you know, you contact the people and say, "Well, what was really your concern, what's going on?" And I, as the Alderman, will ask the question during the meeting. So, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to do this, and I don't think anybody's trying to, you know, put a zipper or muzzle on democracy here as, as much as, you know, there has been a couple, not recently, but there's been some experiences in the past where it became kind of an extreme situation, and you had people that, whatever it was we were voting on, just didn't like it, so they came, "Well, let's get a group of 12 people and get down there and just start asking questions and re-ask the question, and, you know, see if we can get a different answer from a different side of the room type of thing."
No, I appreciate it, yeah.
If I, if I remember correctly, when I first got on the council, the matters from the public was way at the bottom of the agenda, and we moved it up so that citizens wouldn't have to wait through our entire process to ask their questions, so I, I think that we worked at accommodating those questions, too, so.
And it certainly allows then for, because it's at the beginning of the agenda, so that anybody sitting here in the council, if a citizen like we just saw had some questions on a particular item, when we got to that item, they could choose to discuss it and explore it in greater discussion and detail, should they feel it was missing in the, in the whole presentation on it, so. I think it's a good idea to have it where it is, and, you know, we just have to be somewhat flexible in how we do it, but as I think we have shown, we don't want to turn the meeting into a kind of a free-for-all where we lose the decorum and the ideas and, you know, focus of what we're here trying to be, so we have to be careful about that.
Yeah, and I, and I acknowledge that you've, you've been particularly gracious in terms of being flexible and acknowledging people in the audience, so it's not a criticism of that at all, I was just a little puzzled about this one instance, so thank you for clarifying.
I just have one more thing. And I mentioned the private sector, and I'm going to ask of the council members, put your BlackBerrys away, put your iPhones away, and listen to the citizens, okay? You know, pay attention to us. And a lot of people feel, they don't want to come to these because they feel nobody listens to you. The last time I was here, I saw the same thing. You know what? We don't do that. I turned my phone off. You know, I respect you, I listen to you, so listen to the citizens, come on.
Okay, this is matters from the public. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Sorry, I should have come here a half hour earlier. On your way out, we have three light fixture examples. We're going to be taking them down tomorrow because the representative needs them back. The first one is kind of a skylight, it reminds me of a skylight condition. The third one, the second one has a bar on it, and the, and the third one has little scallops, and if you could respond to John Dillon's email and give us your input on that, we'd appreciate it, because we're looking at, you know, a long-term strategy for replacing lights. This, these would all be LED, they're all LED, and they all have different attributes, so, thank you.
Are we looking for feedback regarding the design of the light fixture, or just the Kelvin temperature range?
I, I'll take, we'll take any input you have. It does seem a little cold. I like the quality of the light of this first one, but the, the temperature seems a little cold, and obviously with LED, we have the ability to manipulate that, but notice how high that spread of light is, and that's the new asset of these kind of light fixtures.
Are the costs similar between the three?
They're not that dissimilar. Also, when you start looking at the fact that the maintenance man won't have to keep replacing bulbs, that's, that's the real value, but yeah, they're all cost comparative. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan, did you have a question, or, or me?
It won't be as long as it was last week, I promise. Okay, this is about, I, I reviewed the Trotter study. This was a 2008 study that had complete, it was in-depth study with cost, priority recommendations, financing information, payment information, monitoring for storm sewers and the combined stores, sewers. I've talked to the city employees, the mayor, several Alderman women, and others. Unfortunately, the questions I have have not been answered, so I believe we, the public, need to require answers. I've looked up the minutes from the meetings, and I don't find all the answers in them, so maybe some of the others will have better luck. The study I'm talking about was the 2008 wastewater master plan. I looked over, well, I read incomplete, the complete study plus all the updates. Section 3, the collection system, the entire 2008 wastewater master plan and updates, along with the executive summary, and the city's comprehensive plan and minutes related to these studies and plans. The bid requests and the bid responses for the plans, as well as the stormwater utility feasibility study, bid and response and resolutions. Bill McGrath confirmed his statement last Monday to the city council that home rule allows the city to do anything it wants to do that's not specifically limited by statute. He proceeded to tell the council and the audience that the city has not used its power to raise taxes, and he misspoke, because the city instituted a home rule tax of a half cent for the electric, and then converted a previous home rule half-cent sales tax that we had voted on, but then you can, you converted it, this was back a few years ago. So you have used home rule to raise taxes. And the, the city just commissioned a $36,000 study for a stormwater utility feasibility with Municipal Financial Services Group of Annapolis, Maryland, and they were awarded the contract for professional financial and engineering services in the amount not to exceed $36,217. That group is teaming up with Baxter and Woodman, and my questions regarding the use of Baxter and Woodman involve duplication of studies and services done by Trotter and Associates in that 2008 study with the updates. At Monday night's city council meeting, there was a public hearing regarding the SSAs, the special service areas wherein the people living in those areas were to be assessed a certain amount of money for maintenance of the drainage basin and the retention areas. It was quite a spirited hearing, and if we can get all the people to think about the ramification of the actions, maybe we can find the best solution. Certain parcels of land were developed with stormwater retention basins and detention ponds and other perhaps not-so-easy-to-maintain areas. In order to keep up the maintenance of the areas, either a homeowners association was established or special service areas were established by the city and the developer to ensure that the maintenance was done. Unfortunately, either maintenance was not always done, or there was some problem with the charges. The discussion about, about the special service areas was tabled and was to be discussed at last Tuesday's J-Cow meeting. Since I didn't go, I can't comment on what happened there. But this all relates to the Trotter study. Part of the Trotter study was an in-depth study to alleviate the problems caused by the combined sewer areas in Batavia. Problems caused by the combined sewer overflows were street flooding or and/or backups and processing of storm water by our wastewater treatment plant causing capacity problems. These are violations of the Clean Water Act. Distardged from these combined sewer areas without full treatment is also a violation of the Clean Water Act. The U.S. EPA and the Illinois EPA will be requiring that the city come into compliance and may require a compliance commitment agreement. Anyone who's interested can look at the 2008 wastewater master plan for the city of Batavia, Section 3 collection system. The study conclusions are set in Sections 3.5.8 and 3.6 and 3.62. In Section 3.6.2 capital improvement plan, it was stated that the NPDES permit number IL0022543 is set to expire in 2011, and the project was recommended to be completed by that time. The project costs are delineated in that section. The total cost was to be $8.7 million funded through the Illinois EPA Low Interest Loan Program. The entire 2008 wastewater master plan encompassed community needs, lift stations, wastewater treatment capacity, and regulatory requirements. There was... There was an update to this plan in 2008, to this 2008 plan costing $15,000, and somehow the completion date was moved up to 2012, and the NPDES permit got renewed and was set to expire in 2012. There was also a 2013 update for the wastewater treatment plant. Here are the questions. How much did the original Trotter study cost the citizens of Batavia? And how much did each of these updates cost the citizens of Batavia? Has the city had to pay any fines or penalties for noncompliance? Or has the city been required to implement a C-MOM through special conditions of the city's NPDES permit when it was, when it is or was renewed? If so, what were the additional requirements and at what cost? What portions or portion of the 2008 Trotter study has been completed or implemented, and at what cost? I could find no information about what was implemented, what was done, and what wasn't. The city completed an IEPA loan, pre-loan application in fiscal year 2009. What were the results of that application? Were there any IEPA loans subsequently issued, and at what interest rates, and what are the debt payments? It appears that the costs in the 2008 Trotter study did not change with the updates. Could it be that the recession has kept the prices low and that we could have saved a lot of money had we completed the recommendations in order of their criticality? Given the complexity of the in-depth study done by Trotter, will we be paying Baxter and Woodman for a duplication of efforts? Trotter established rates in their 2008 study for our sewer charges. They would have had to had reviewed the city's ability to bill for sewer charges, and so now I question whether or not a study is needed for yet another utility charge, the stormwater utility. Again, duplication of efforts at a $36,000 initial cost plus implementation. Caution to all citizens of Batavia. If you do not like the idea of using your homeowners' associations dues to keep up the retention and detention areas, or you don't like the idea of a special service area which is a tax on a specific area, how do you like the idea of paying upwards of $25 a month for a stormwater utility with no guarantees that the work on your areas will get done or that the charges will not continue to go up? A stormwater utility is a tax on anyone, whether or not we use it. There is no tax cap and no tax protections for citizens in a stormwater utility. The city can charge whatever it wants and continue to charge. So just like these fees for brush and leaf pickup, they can go up and up and up, and the citizens don't have any choice but to pay those charges or move from Batavia. A tax at least has some recourse to the citizens and generally has some limitation. A fee taking the form of a utility payable by every citizen is still a tax. A rose by any other name is still a rose. Think about it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to respond just for a second. And Ms. Dinwiddie gave those, or some of those questions to the council last time she spoke, and I spent about two hours today starting to give, to respond to those, and I'll have that out to everyone. I just want to make a couple of points. I think Yvonne is totally misunderstanding the difference between the sewer utility and the stormwater, or a potential stormwater utility. The collection system referred to in the 2008 study has absolutely nothing to do with a stormwater utility. The collection system is the collection system for sanitary, not the collection system for stormwater. None of the analysis, except for that small part, which is combined sewers, which is a minor issue compared to our whole sanitary system, was dealt with in that study. So I want to make that really clear. Secondly, if the city council ever did create a stormwater utility, it goes through rat-making like anything else. You can only, they can only charge rates for the expenditures that the city believes will be made as part of that utility. So there's certainly, Yvonne's free to call us anytime. When she doesn't see any information on the website, is free to call us or email us to kind of get some of those basic issues straightened out, because I think it leads to some misanalysis. We have gotten our NPDES permit every time. We are absolutely under no conditions because there is no issue, and there's no tie between stormwater, no tie between this, the combined system and stormwater utility. Our NPDES for sewer was just received within the last couple of days, and I'm not aware of any conditions on that, so I'll be glad to talk with her and further and try and address some of her issues. But it's my main point, the Trotter study has nothing to do with stormwater. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience this evening? All right, moving to item number seven, which is Main Street. Joy, do you have something?
Jamie's playing Vanna White for me today. I'm Joy, I'm the director for Batavia Main Street. I'm here to give you your Main Street Minute for December. We had 72 Main Street volunteers donate 145 hours for planning meetings and programs and events in November. And actually, so far, I did want to say, through November, we've had over 1,700 people donating over 2,800 hours for this year so far. So it's really, we're really very happy that our volunteers have come out to do so many things for our town. I just wanted to have you guys check back with us on something fun that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. We've had several requests, and actually, Mary and I just spoke today also about working and hosting a Batavia Winters Farmer's Market. So I want to let everybody know that that's actually going to be something that we're going to do on Saturdays from January 10 through May 23, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's actually due to a few different vendors coming up to us and saying that that's something they wanted to do year-round, and then also Gaetano's offered up their space so that we could have that on Saturdays. So look forward to a Winters Market at Gaetano's Restaurant. And then speaking of markets, I wanted to just update everybody on the Artisan Collective pop-up market. It's found a new home for the winter, so you can actually see the monthly market pop-up at the Historic Challenge Buildings at 335 North River Street, and this will be on Thursdays. It's January 15, February 12, March 19, and April 16. And then, coming up in February, we're kind of going to be hosting our Celebrate Success event again. This time, instead of the dock, we're going to do it at Interiors for Business. It'll be Thursday, February 12 at 7:00 p.m. If you hadn't been to Celebrate Success before, this is our annual awards party and an event to say thank you and celebrate our community members, our committees, the businesses and property owners who all make downtown Batavia such a unique place to live. Along with the awards ceremony, guests can enjoy music and appetizers and refreshments. We're going to be giving out 10 Downtown Main Street awards. They'll be presented at this, at this event, and I've passed out to you guys some nomination forms as well, so please consider nominating your favorite businesses and any other hard-working volunteers that you see in the community, because we really just want to acknowledge everything that they've been doing. And then for more information and nomination forms, you can actually visit downtownbatavia.com. And then I also just wanted to point out and give a little bit of kudos to our businesses downtown for all of the really beautiful window displays that we're seeing for the holiday season. I know that our city does such a great job decorating the streets on Wilson and on Batavia Avenue and River Street, but if you look every Friday from now until Christmas, I know that Batavia Academy of Dance is doing live dancers in their windows, and then everybody else has just done such a great job. There's like Olaf going on, I think, on Batavia Floral's windows, and it's just a really great thing to see everybody celebrating the holidays. And then to find out more about what we do and how to get involved with the community, you can contact Main Street at (630) 761-3528, or visit downtownbatavia.com. And then I wanted to introduce tonight, the business of the month. It's a funny business in town specializing in men's haircuts and epic beards, so if you have a beard, please go and see them. They make their work easy to wear and easy to style and give their clients really great attention to detail. You're going to want to check out the Barbers of Beards Guard at their new location. It's 117 South Batavia Avenue. So here to speak a little bit more about the business are owners Natalie and Tyler Anderson.
Hey, everybody. I'm Natalie Anderson and...
I'm Tyler.
And yeah, that Saturday Farmer's Market sounds pretty fantastic, but unfortunately, we are pretty much chained to our chairs for a solid six hours on Saturday. We have, we just hired a new barber, which is great. We thought we'd have some room for walk-ins on occasion, and that lasted 18 hours before we got full again. So Tyler, you want to say what brought us to Batavia?
We happened across Batavia by chance and fell in love immediately. I come from a small town out in South Dakota, and the same feeling I have going back to visit there, I felt when I came down to Batavia. And we love the way that all the businesses kind of merge or kind of support each other, that nice community feel, and we just want to be a part of that and give back.
Yeah, it's just been a great area to be in. We happened across it while we were looking all over the Tri-Cities for a location, and the guys that, or the tattooed Muppets, as we call them, at Fallen Star Tattoo with their huge beards were outside, and looked at the place, and with that pressed tin ceiling, we've been told, Mr. Mayor, to talk to you about the history of the building, because it just has so much going for it. The basement has been dubbed the...
It's creepy.
The murder basement by our six-year-old. It's good stuff. So yeah, the business has been going absolutely fantastically. We have been doing some slightly odd promotion in the form of things like "They Came From the Parking Lot." It's our pumpkin zombie video, all sorts of things. There's going to be Wayne's World parodies coming up, lots of SNL things. So this is our form of advertising, and it seems to be working. The only problems we've been having so far is that it's growing way faster than we had anticipated, so now it's kind of catch-up time. What do all of those founding codes mean? But it's good stuff.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's about it.
Yeah.
You want to give us some basics like days you're open, hours of operation?
Right. This is our first time doing this. We've been open three months. Brand-new business owners, a little nervous.
We're open Tuesday through Saturday. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we're open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thursdays and Fridays from 11:00 to 7:00, and Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00.
Because we have our six-year-old shop kid extraordinaire, as she calls herself, which she wants on her own business cards, that we always have to get home for dinner. So we're, you know, trying to create a business that can both serve the public, especially in the service industry where you work when everybody else doesn't, but still have a good life for an awesome little one who goes to H.C. Storm and is convinced that it is run by Professor Xavier, because it sounds like the X-Men school, which it totally does.
We welcome you to our community. You were kind enough to contact me a couple of weeks ago with that history inquiry.
We were.
I just want to let you know, I have been, you're in the former Johnson Drugstore space...
Yes.
Which was there for many, many years, and a few of us who are old-time Batavians here will remember Johnson's Drugstore.
Open date 1990, I believe.
And I was just trying today, I had, I finally got it, but I'm trying to contact Mr. Johnson's daughter...
Oh, wow.
Who is in town to confirm some dates and some stuff, and I had to dig in and get some pictures that I want to give you that you can maybe display...
Oh, please, Daddy.
Because there's a very interesting history story, and I'm not going to get into it now, but there's a real interesting history story about that store and an event that happened there, that I think will, anybody that'll come in will recognize the people that were involved in it.
Well, we invite you to stop by any time.
Yeah, I will be coming by one of these days, but I'm still getting together and the data and confirming what went on, but it's a fascinating story of Batavia history.
Absolutely. Well, maybe we'll let you know when Santa Jesse comes by again. We have multiple real bearded Santas that come to our shop. Santa Jesse is a direct descendant of Robert E. Lee, so obviously a huge, they're the coolest Santas ever. These are normal Santas, absolutely. And, you know, if there's any kids around, make sure to bring them by, because A, we have a shop babysitter during after-school hours, so, you know, bring the kids, get them away from the wife for a little bit. We also have a partnership with Kenrose Brewing going, where, you know, obviously, we don't sell beer, but if you are there, you can totally have one. And fresh ground roasting, just all kinds of great partnerships all over the city. Well, Tri-Cities.
I just want to know how your Twitter crush with Fermilabs is going.
We are...
So far, so good.
There's a master plan behind, yes, we've had this campaign of awkwardly flirting with Fermilab on Twitter in hopes that they will help us build a full-size Dalek from Doctor Who that's also a towel warmer, that when it opens up, it says "Exfoliate." That is our dream, and one day, one day, it will be realized. But yeah, we need to find some metal fabricators or something, so, yes. Birds who like to do weird things with space and time and science, it's good.
Well, we welcome you to our town. We appreciate you being here, and we look forward to many years of business growth and development.
Absolutely. Barbers dyed our chairs, that's kind of the industry standard. That's what we're planning on doing. We're only 30, we got some time.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, moving to item number eight, which is ordinance 14-66, the 2014 tax levy. Alderman Stark?
Thank you, Your Honor. On December, in December, we passed our budget, and after the budget has been passed, we have to pass an ordinance for the tax levy. And so ordinance 1466 explains what the purpose of the tax levy is and where the money goes to, and so I would recommend that we approve ordinance 1466, the 2014 tax levy.
Second. Move Alderman Stark, second Alderman Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 14-66, the 2014 tax levy. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole?
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Ordinance 14-66 is approved, 13 yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is ordinance 14-67, SSA number 30, the tax levy. Alderman Stark?
I also have that, Your Honor. This levy is for a special service area number 30. It is for the sum of $6,350 for the purpose of stormwater detention area maintenance and repair. And again, I move that we approve ordinance 1467, SSA number 30, tax levy.
Second. Move Alderman Stark, second Alderman Chansett, for the approval of ordinance 14-67. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole?
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Ordinance 14-67 is approved, 12 yes, one no, one absent. Moving to item number 10, which is ordinance 14-68, annexing and zoning certain territory in the city of Batavia, a portion of Deer Path Road. Alderman Brown, do you have this one?
Your Honor, thank you. A while back, we approved, the city council approved resolution 06-46, which authorized the jurisdictional transfer of part of Deer Path Road, which is between Limestone Drive and the southerly limits of the city of Batavia. They did that in conjunction, the city of Batavia did that in conjunction with the township, and it was done in order to facilitate the jurisdictional entities or the jurisdictional boundaries of the city and the township. This was done so that we could maintain that certain area of the road and improve it throughout the Tanglewood Hills development process. Since that time, it's been discovered that IDOT has to approve the transfer and be a part of the process, and there's been some delays in that. So staff has asked that we try to speed this up with the passage of ordinance 14-68. That would also give us the authority to do the necessary improvements that would be required on that portion of the roadway. This was discussed at the committee of a whole meeting and approved for a recommendation to the city councils, so I move that we approve ordinance 14-68, annexing and zoning certain territory to the city of Batavia, portions of Deer Path Road.
Second. Move Alderman Brown, second Alderman Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 14-68, annexing portions of Deer Path Road to the city of Batavia. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 14-68 is approved, 13 yes, no, no, one absent. Moving to item number 11, which is ordinance 14-70, amending the text of the zoning code chapters 2.3, 2.6, 4.2, 4.4, 4.5, and 6.
It's something that we're not familiar with, but we were very concerned that with the limited amount of them that were going to be allowed in the state and in the area, that anyone that would have one located in their town, whether it be Batavia or another municipality, but all we had to worry about was Batavia, was what kind of use was it going to have? So, how many people were going to be visiting this facility at one time? And we're still not really sure about that because we haven't had it, we don't have the experience of having it. There were a couple of people that spoke at the public hearing on it. They actually were people that were petitioning the state to locate one, so they did educate us a little bit about it. But again, like I said, it's something that we're not familiar with, so Alderman Vassiliyan actually recommended that we lower the requirement that the staff had put in the tax zoning change for the parking to bring it down to what the medical campuses would allow, so that that lowered or actually increased the amount of parking that would be required than what was originally proposed in the original code. So, I feel as though we've got some very good control over any proposal that may come to us in the future if one would come to us, and we've done that, we've been able to accomplish that through this ordinance. So, I move for approval of Ordinance 14-70, amending the text of the zoning code.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, Second Baldorman Chansett for the approval of Ordinance 14-70. Any discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resolutions 14-162-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent.
Moving to item number 13, which is Ordinance 14-73, wage and salary for non-collected representative employees for the years 2015, 16, and 17. Alderman Stark, do you have this one?
I do, Your Honor. Before we can vote on this ordinance, we will also have to amend the pay grade table so that both the position of Public Works Director and Finance Director be moved to grade 27. So, I move that we amend the pay grade table to provide that the position of Public Works Director and Finance Director be moved to pay grade 27.
Second.
Move by Alderman Stark, Second Baldorman Chansett for the movement on the pay grades. Any discussion? None of this was discussed at the committee meeting. Kirk, hold the roll on the motion for the amendment.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 14-73 is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item number 12, which is Resolution 14-162-R, amend agreement with Altamano to furnish design services for the Houston Street project not to exceed $15,000. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Or Alderman Brown, you have it?
This also was discussed at committee quite a few times, and to kind of bring the public up to speed on what this is, is Houston Street is going to be reconstructed this year into a streetscape fashion. This last summer, we saw the water main get replaced on Houston Street. It was 100 and some years old, and the street is in desperate need of repair. So, in the process of doing the repair of the street and rebuilding of the street, it was the council's desire and approval to do some streetscape work on it. So, it's not going to be anything like you see on River Street. It's going to be more of a traditional street design, but there's going to be some hardscapes and some amenities, some amenities that go along with it. And the city is working in conjunction with the Park District on this, and they got to a certain point, the design had been changed at a recent time, and due to that design change, staff had been working with the civil engineer, and they got to a point where they felt like they just needed some more professional help with some of the streetscape, I guess I could call it, design of it, the portion of it. You know, we've got a lot of things going on out there. We've got pedestrians, we've got bicycles, we've got events that happen quite often throughout the year, we've got vehicles, and there's many different ways that they cross and transfer from one side to the other. We've got the museum over there, and there's just an awful lot happening out there. So, staff felt very strongly that we get Altamano involved in on this, so they brought them in, they discussed it with them. They actually started out a little bit higher than the $15,000 that's in the resolution in front of us tonight, but staff's very comfortable that they got them to come down on their price a little bit. It's very clear in the resolution what Altamano is willing to provide for us for that $15,000, and it's very hopeful that we'll be able to get everything we need from them for that. As I said, this was discussed quite a bit at the committee. There was a concern over the, some of the language of the contract with Altamano with some hourly rates in there, so the suggestion was made that the resolution be spelled out as it is with a $15,000 maximum amount to be spent. So, I move for approval of Resolution 14-162-R, Houston Street Design Agreement.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, Second Baldorman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution 14-162-R, amend agreement with Altamano to furnish design standards for the Houston Street project. Any discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resolution 14-162-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item number 13, which is Ordinance 14-73, wage and salary for non-collected representative employees for the years 2015, 16, and 17. Alderman Stark, do you have this one?
I do, Your Honor. Before we can vote on this ordinance, we will also have to amend the pay grade table so that both the position of Public Works Director and Finance Director be moved to grade 27. So, I move that we amend the pay grade table to provide that the position of Public Works Director and Finance Director be moved to pay grade 27.
Second.
Move by Alderman Stark, Second Baldorman Chansett for the movement on the pay grades. Any discussion? None of this was discussed at the committee meeting. Kirk, hold the roll on the motion for the amendment.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resolution 14-162-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item number 13, which is Resolution 14-163-R, the Walgreens redevelopment agreement, second amendment. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. I'm happy to announce that, I think it's been in the-
I just interrupted us for a second. I'll be recusing myself both from this item and also for the following one, the Walgreens redevelopment, as both of these items involve current clients of mine. Thank you.
Hey, I'm happy to announce that it appears as though we're going to have somebody moving into the Campana Building. They've, I think we've all probably seen that in the paper and heard about it, but they have petitioned for variance to erect two freestanding signs to advertise what they hope to do in the fall of 2015. In order to get this, in order to install those freestanding signs, they had to apply for a variance as those signs are not allowed under the current zoning code. The signs that they want to erect are really no bigger than the signs that they would be allowed to erect. The difference is that the signs that they would be allowed to erect would have to be placed on the building itself, and because of the unique situation where the building is set back so far off of the right-of-way, it's just unrealistic to think that anybody could even see those signs. So, they have asked that a variance be granted so that they could erect these signs. It is a historic, it's in within the historic preservation area, it is a historic building, so they had to go through all that process. This was discussed at committee level, it did go through a public hearing, and it was recommended to the city council for approval. I might note that this is for a six-month period only, that these signs can be put up for, and during this six-month, the petitioner said at the committee meeting that he plans on getting drawings done and coming in for a building permit so he can put up temporary signs that would be satisfactory to the historic preservation and suit the needs of their tenant. So, I move for approval of Ordinance 14-74, grant of variance for freestanding temporary signs for Harbor Bridge Academy at 901 North Batavia Avenue. Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, Second Baldorman Fisher for the approval of the Ordinance 14-74, approving the two freestanding temporary signs. Any discussion? Kirk, hold the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resolution 14-162-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to, I'd like the record to reflect that Mr. Alderman Vassiliyan has re-entered the meeting. Moving to item number 16, which is the approval of a Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street Downtown Dance. Got this one. Alderman Stark?
Batavia Main Street has come to the city and asked for a temporary liquor license. It's a one-day indoor Class F liquor license with live entertainment for a special event, the Downtown Dance Swing at Shannon Hall. And Chief Shira and the police department have fully vetted Batavia Main Street, and so I move that we approve this temporary liquor license, the Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street Downtown Dance.
Second.
Move by Alderman Stark, Second Baldorman Chansett for the approval of the Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street for its Downtown Dance. Any discussion?
I have a question here.
Alderman Stark?
Yes, this is not an event I've heard advertised very much, and so I would like to know more about it, and I know that Jamie, Alderman, Sam, and is Joyce still here? Because it sounds like a fun event.
Joyce, the dancer, so she can explain that.
The Downtown Dance is actually something that Main Street partners with another group called Tri-City Swing, and they actually bring in live music. It's every other month that they do this, and Shannon Hall is usually our place that we host it. Basically, they'll bring in live vintage jazz, swing, blues. This band that's going to be performing on Saturday is Miss Jubilee and the Humdingers, and they're actually from St. Louis. The Downtown Dance folks are kind of new, so it is something that they're starting to get going, but they do have weekly, I believe, lessons at Batavia Academy of Dance on Sundays. So, if anyone's interested in learning how to swing dance, Lindy Hop, Shag Charleston, those are kind of like the main ones that they do at the lessons. And then, the actual event has a dance lesson at the beginning and then live music throughout the night. And this one is special, it is their snowball, so it's actually going to be a little bit dressier. Usually, people just come kind of street clothes, and it's, it really is a whole lot of fun. It's a really interesting group of people that come out because we have people really not just from the Tri-City areas, people have come in for these dances from out of state. A lot of it is the bands, and then it's actually also this niche group of people that like to do swing and Lindy Hop and Balboa and things like that. So, it's vintage jazz, and this singer, Valerie of Miss Jubilee, is phenomenal. So, I really do recommend anybody that wants to come out for it to come out.
And how can you get tickets?
You can get tickets at Batavia, or thedowntownbatavia.com/snowball. So, it's $20, and actually, they're doing also a bit of a drive for the access toys, so if you do bring a toy for access, you get a free drink ticket at this dance.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for asking.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Alderman, Mr. Caddan?
It was noted in the request that we also waived the fee for the liquor license, which we typically do, and wanted to make sure that was added in.
We need to note, thank you, that we need to note that they've asked for a waiver of the fee for a public service event here, so. Any other discussion? Kirk, hold the roll then on the Class F license.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item number 17, which is Ordinance 14-75, ordinance regulating the 2015 salaries and wages for paid-on-call fire department members for the years 2015, 16, and 17. Alderman Stark, do you have this? so I move that we approve this temporary liquor license, the Class F liquor license for Potavia Main Street Downtown Dance.
Second. Move Alderman Stark, second, Alderman Chanset, for the approval of the Class F liquor license for Potavia Main Street for its Downtown Dance. Any discussion?
I have a question here.
Alderman Stark?
Yes, this is not an event I've heard advertised very much, and so I would like to know more about it, and I know that Jamie, Alderman, Sam, and is Joyce still here? Because it sounds like a fun event.
Joyce, the dancer, so she can explain that.
The Downtown Dance is actually something that Main Street partners with another group called Tri-City Swing, and they actually bring in live music. It's every other month that they do this, and Shannon Hall is usually our place that we host it. Basically, they'll bring in live vintage jazz, swing, blues. This band that's going to be performing on Saturday is Miss Jubilee and the Humdingers, and they're actually from St. Louis. The Downtown Dance folks are kind of new, so it is something that they're starting to get going. But they do have weekly, I believe, lessons at Potavia Academy of Dance on Sundays. So if anyone's interested in learning how to swing dance, Lindy Hop, Shag Charleston, those are kind of like the main ones that they do at the lessons. And then the actual event has a dance lesson at the beginning and then live music throughout the night. And this one is special. It is their snowball, so it's actually going to be a little bit dressier. Usually, people just come kind of street clothes, and it really is a whole lot of fun. It's a really interesting group of people that come out because we have people really, not just from the tri-city areas, people have come in for these dances from out of state. A lot of it is the bands, and then it's actually also this niche group of people that like to do swing and Lindy Hop and Balboa and things like that. So it's vintage jazz, and this singer Valerie of Miss Jubilee is phenomenal. So I really do recommend anybody that wants to come out for it to come out.
And how can you get tickets?
You can get tickets at Potavia, or thedowntownpotavia.com/snowball. So it's twenty dollars, and actually, they're doing also a bit of a drive for the access toys, so if you do bring a toy for access, you get a free drink ticket at this dance.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for asking.
Any other questions? Alderman, Mr. Cadden?
It was noted in the request that we also waive the fee for the liquor license, which we typically do, and wanted to make sure that was added in.
We need to note, thank you, that we need to note that they've asked for a waiver of the fee for a public service event here, so. Any other discussion? Kirk Hallerow then on the Class F license.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Ordinance fourteen dash seventy-five is approved, thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, moving to eighteen, the administrators' report. Mr. McGrath?
No report this evening, mayor.
Committee reports, committee development, Alderman Brown?
No report tonight, your honor, but a meeting to announce is coming Tuesday night, tomorrow evening. We've got a committee of a whole agenda, or a committee of a whole meeting scheduled for seven thirty P.M. The CDC has got four items on their portion of it. It is resolution fifteen oh one, fifteen oh two, and fifteen oh three, which are all kind of a housekeeping thing of accepting a plat of dedication for some properties on Hamlet Street. Also on the CDC portion is an item which is Streetscape and TIF, and that is on, I think, every agenda, every committee of a whole meeting, as we are always working on the streets in the downtown Potavia, which involves Streetscape, so it's always there, so we can always bring up whatever needs to be brought up at that time for anything that we're working on. The, I don't know, is the historic preservation meeting next Monday? It's canceled. Okay, plant commission's canceled also, and as far as I'm concerned, there will be no more committee of a whole meetings for the rest of the year other than tomorrow night. That's all I have.
You still, I really wonder about why you want to do this meeting tomorrow night. There's nothing really pressing on there that I can see. The problem we got here is, is I know some of you have talked to me, and some of you are literally leaving the state here.
Well, we did bring that up at the last meeting, your honor, and we pulled the committee, and I think twelve out of the, eleven out of the twelve people that were here are able to attend tomorrow night's meeting. I agree with you, it'd be nice not to have it, but item number eleven, under government services, is a discussion for possible incentives for property tax rebate for a piece of property out in the Eastside Industrial Park. So I believe staff felt very strongly that that could put on the agenda. These other items, the dedication, that kind of stuff can sit there, but it's ready to go. We're going to be down here for a meeting anyway, so we'll get through that very quickly, and then we'll have the conversation on the property tax rebate proposal.
I'm wondering whether we want to have that meeting, because as far as I'm, I know a little bit about that situation, and I don't think that is probably as long in discussion as we're in a position to even talk about who it is, or that they really want to go here, or that there's a deal on the table.
Dave, just in the last couple of days, there's just been a flurry of communications going back and forth, and where I think we're in a really positive place, we are working with another government entity to come up with a new governmental agreement, but I don't think we're going to be in a place where we can significantly advance it tomorrow night. I can tell you that definitely. That other board doesn't meet till early, I think the first or second week of January, so if this goes to even the first cow in January, we think we're fine, and then by that time, we should have a finished, final agreement vetted by all the attorneys.
I wasn't aware of that, so I think that's the only real pressing thing on the agenda for tomorrow night, right?
That's right.
So with that being said, I would make a motion that we cancel all the committee of a whole meetings for the remainder of the year.
Second. Move Alderman Brown, second, Alderman O'Brien, that we cancel the rest of the committee meetings for the remainder of the year. I will advise you, I think after the first of the year, there's going to be a fairly heavy agenda, but right at the moment, I know we're going to run into some absences here as far as the availability of people, and there's a lot of conflicts with a lot of you, so I don't want to start having meetings and then not have the forums here to have the meetings, so.
Well, and as I mentioned at the last committee of a whole meeting also, that, you know, we are very shorthanded on staff, as Alderman Chanset and others have mentioned, and there's just an awful lot going on, and staff really needs the proper amount of time to prepare these things before they present to us, and we need the proper amount of time to be able to review them. You know, it's very, it's great that some of our staff works on Sundays in order to get things out to us, but that just doesn't give us much time to review them so we can have good conversation on them on Tuesday. So this will give them some time also to catch up on some of these items and be able to present them to us.
So we have a motion and second for the canceling of the meeting. Kirk Hallerow?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, one no.
Thirteen yes.
Everybody's here now. Let Alderman.
Homon's here, so thirteen yes, one no.
Thirteen yes, one no.
Your honor, we didn't have any discussion just prior to that, and it would be my recommendation that everyone, even though we're not meeting, take the time to look over ordinance fifteen oh one, the amending the Potavia Municipal Code Regarding Certain City Officers, and then get questions to Bill in advance, because it's quite lengthy and a lot of redlining, and so if you have any questions, you definitely would want to submit those before our next meeting.
Public utilities, Alderman Clark?
Alderman Clark, thank you.
Administrative services, Alderman Stark?
I got nothing.
City services, Alderman Wolf?
I guess I can say I don't have any report.
No games to report on?
Just a couple of basketball games coming up Friday night, and then on to the next year.
Okay, moving then to other business. Anybody got anything? Alderman Callahan?
I just have two things real quick. The, a couple of weeks ago, there was a, Berkeley received a shopping cart for special needs with kids, and after that, Trader Joe's also purchased one for their store too, so I just wanted to commend Trader Joe's for doing that. From what I hear, it is being used fairly regularly. And the second one, Bill brought up an idea to me today that I frankly love, that it's talking about with the upcoming election this next year and the abysmal voter rates that we've had. I was wondering if everybody would want to think about how we could figure out a challenge to St. Charles and Geneva to figure out who can get the best citizen participation for their voter, for their voter engagement. So just to think about for the next coming year, maybe a voter's cup or something along those lines that hopefully we win the inaugural year and maintain it.
Just focus on the school districts.
As a point of order, be very careful. We can't give anyone an actual incentive to go out and vote, because that's specifically...
We are not Chicago.
We're not Chicago, Marty, we're not Chicago.
But I thought it was a, I thought it was a great idea. There's been a lot of discussion on Facebook about the lack of voter participation and...
Mayor Verden challenging this.
I would totally echo that. I only needed to get a handful of signatures to remain on the ballot, and it's unfortunate how few people do participate in the process. I do agree.
Yep, absolutely.
I'd like to see just a challenge within our ranks here, see who can draw the most. I've always thought that was something that I liked to...
Believe you just threw it down.
Yeah. What were the most votes?
Speaking of elections, it is time to file the petitions for the aldermanic election in 2015. I was in the office at eight AM this morning. My office hours this morning were eight AM to ten AM. Tomorrow, I will be in the office from three PM to five PM, Thursday, eleven AM to three PM, and Monday, December twenty-second, three PM to five PM. As always, though, they can also be dropped off. I've instructed the receptionist staff on how to date and time them so that we know when they've come in. But I will be in the offices during those times, and as always, you can email me with any questions.
Okay, moving to the mayor's report. I'm very pleased, as I said during the opening prayer, we had, I felt an outstanding day yesterday. Alderman Brown was over to see us for a while, and Alderman Som was there for quite a while helping, and we had on our, on the list at the end of the day, when they finally kind of drew the line in the sand, is when you had to register and be pre-approved to come in. We had two hundred and twenty-three families in Potavia that had said that they were in need of some type of support at the Christmas season, and the two hundred and twenty-three families represents six hundred and sixty-seven children that were serviced between one and babies through high school. And the beautiful part of what happened last week was, is that as the week progressed, there just became this thundering momentum of support that rolled in for it, and we received a number of very nice, generous donations from private citizens and others in the community who stepped forward and offered checks to help sustain what was going on. So they worked till about six o'clock last night, just working people through the process, and we had representatives of the police and fire department there with us. We like to have somebody from the fire department there, because there's all this paper around all this time, and the building doesn't have a, that we use, the old Baptist church, there is not a real, there's no sprinkler system and whatever. So with all those people in the building, we like to have a fireman there with a radio and an extinguisher in case something happened. Fortunately, nothing did, but then we also had, the Potavia Police Department was there, as was the Potavia Emergency Services and Disaster Agency. Mr. Davis was there with himself, and a couple of his folks stopped in, and then we had a great, a high degree of support from Potavia High School in that the Potavia High School baseball team showed up, and we reported on Facebook it was football. And we need to, we need to correct that.
I'll fix it.
If we could, because it was the baseball team, and the baseball team, what was the beautiful part about them is, when you came in the door, they gave everybody these big bags, I mean, forty-gallon, I'll call them forty-gallon trash bags, to put their stuff in. And some of these bags got to be really seriously heavy, and so when the folks would come to this door and be checked out, many of them physically could not carry their bags. So right away, stepped up the Potavia High School baseball team members, and they tied them up and carried them out to the car and loaded them in the car for folks, and it was really a very nice cooperative thing. And then a number of folks from the Potavia Mothers Club showed up, and then Alderman Som was there with some other, I'll call them volunteering citizens that stepped forward and wanted to help out. So we really had quite a nice turnout of people, and I certainly saw a number of people walk out of there with smiles on their face, and were very appreciative that we did this and that, once again, the Potavia Access Committee has kind of risen to the occasion. As I said earlier, it's my plan that after the first of the year, we're going to have a night where we're going to kind of have an access revitalization event down here, because we'd like to involve some more people in the process, and as most of you know, access really is doing two things right now. They do this toy drive in December, and then on July fourth, they're the ones that sponsor the Potavia fireworks program. In both instances, they require quite a bit of legwork prior to the event, specifically raising money. That's the big thing with the fireworks, and then getting all the various components of that organized. So we're going to ask if there's some other folks that would like to get involved. I've already, today, had a couple of people call down here and say that, gee, I heard about this yesterday, is there some way I could get involved next year? So we're going to try to give them an opportunity. So I guess I wanted to share with the council, if any of you know anybody in your wards that would like to get involved in either one of those activities, you know, and I think as we march forward here on this, maybe we should look at some other things within the community that could be bolstered by some volunteer community input and some other ideas, like whether it's river cleanup or some other things that we could do, and helping senior citizens or whatever. There are some other projects that potentially we could take on if we had the volunteer support to do it, and access has been very successful in doing that, so I'm just very pleased with the way that whole thing came together yesterday. It was one of the, I've been involved with it for a long time, and yesterday was really kind of a high mark, in my opinion, for the sense of fulfillment that I think came out of that by what turned out was, you know, a couple of weeks ago, they were worried about how much really they're going to be able to give away, and at the end of the day yesterday, I think everybody walked out of there pretty well substantiated by what they got, so it was a, it was a great event for the community, and we raised a high mark. Alderman Brown, you have an observation?
Yeah, I just want to point out, your honor, you were very gracious in pointing out all the volunteers that helped out and everything, but I want to recognize also Roy and Rudy and their wives, and Dottie and her husband Mike, they're the, and their families, they're the people that orchestrate the whole thing and make it all happen, and they, you know, they put their blood, sweat, and tears into it, literally, and stay up at night and worry if they're going to be able to pull it together, and one other, I think probably, one thing that was pointed out to me many times yesterday was how much Aldi Corporation has stepped up to the plate, and I think Roy had said that there were at least eight truckloads of items that he was able to get from Aldi. They have just really, really been a good corporate citizen of Potavia. And then I just, you know, the work that goes into it, not only is it all organized by age group and male, female, if the toys that are there require batteries, they make sure that there's batteries attached to them, they make sure there's gift cards there that are available for, you know, we all like to go out and we all like to buy the Barbie dolls and the little trucks and things like that for the little kids, but there's, you know, twelve and thirteen and fourteen-year-olds that are just as much, you know, dire strait as what some of these other kids are, and so they make sure there's gift cards there for them so that they can join their friends at McDonald's or Target or wherever and do their thing. So they really put it together very well, and it all started out, as you mentioned yesterday, your honor, with Mildred and, I'm forgetting, Mildred and who was the other woman, I'm sorry, that started it out with Mildred.
Ruth Johnson?
Ruth Johnson, yes. And so it all, it started years ago, and they've been able to just keep it going, and so they need to be, you know, commended for what they do for the community.
Yeah, I mean, Scott Haynes, our street superintendent, his grandfather, Glenn Haynes, was very, very active in this whole movement in the very beginning. You go back to the real beginning of it, goes to the Potavia Fire Department with Bud Richter, who was fire chief at the time, and he was fixing broken toys and giving them away because there wasn't a lot of opportunity at that point to raise a lot of money and do stuff. So there was hundreds of bicycles that were repaired in the early days of the program, so.
And anybody that would question the validity of the program, I can tell you they're as honest as anybody can be, and, you know, you wonder, should I write a check, should I buy a toy, what have you? As I mentioned, batteries, Roy told me that there were over, they had to go out and purchase over seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of batteries to supply the toys. We all know batteries cost a lot of money, so it's good that they get those checks so they can fulfill everything that needs to be done.
We had, we had a couple of private citizens write us checks in excess of two thousand dollars apiece to support the program, so, I mean, I think that speaks well of generosity, and in every case of those individuals who did that, I mean, I know who they were, but they were quite adamant that they didn't want any recognition, they didn't want any publicity, they didn't want anybody's name mentioned at a city council meeting or anything else because they just wanted to have it as their own private spirit of Christmas that they were keeping, and so there was a lot of folks, and there was a lot of donations under two thousand, but there were several over two thousand dollars that people wrote checks to do, so that speaks well for the community. As Alderman Brown says, we've been very blessed in this town to have all these folks, and certainly, the Bailey family really has taken this on, and yesterday, it was kind of a two-generation thing, Roy and his wife and all their, both of their children and their spouses were all there, and, I mean, everybody had their role, and we really rolled it along, and I'm very proud of our city people that came over and helped, the fire and the police and the ESDA guys there. Everybody really was most congenial and friendly and cooperative.